Good morning, everybody. It is Tuesday, September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five. My name is Don Swinkert. I'm gonna call the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. To my left, I have Mike Stein. To my right, I have Nan Flegel. Bjorn from I A T, Lisa from the Auditor's Office, Luann in the back with our executive assistant. We have Brittany from the press. Welcome back. And first up, we have visitors and citizens. Is there anybody here from the public that would like to address the board to this morning? We have two people on. Brian, you're just listening, I'm assuming?
Correct.
Okay, welcome aboard. And I don't see anybody here else from the public, so move, move on. First up is Kelly Brown, J C E A Director for an update. Come on up, Kelly.
Morning. Well, it's kind of been interesting because what's probably been the worst year for me personally has been one of the best years, I think professionally. I don't know if that's the way of the universe of kind of saying, you know, kid, life isn't so bad. You know, there's a lot of good things that you can do in the midst of everything. For those who you don't know, I lost my mom in February. I lost my dad about a month ago. So it's been a challenge, but we finished our childcare grant. We got the Bellevue Downtown Assessment Grant. We got the Macocana Downtown Assessment Grant. We got the Boost Grant. And what the Boost Grant is, is it is addressing challenges that we're having in a workforce development as well as challenges with or opportunities with companies to work through succession planning. What does it look like as they will have less workforce in the future? And also even for companies that are looking to sell, you know, what, what does life look like after they retire? After, you know, all of that, it encompasses all of that. And then we also got a D R A grant to support the Boost Grant. So we have an additional fifteen thousand dollars that we're able to put towards that effort as well. The status of the Bellevue Downtown Assessment Grant was completed in June and we got the report back in August. And we are meeting again, actually in two weeks with that same committee to talk about the report because reports don't be any good if they sit on the shelf. So, you know, it's what can we do with the information that we have? What kind, what, what is the low hanging fruit? That we can address some of those things and get things moving? And then what are some of the long-term plans that we've been put into place to make things even bigger and better? The Macocana Downtown Assessment Grant, unfortunately, that happened three days before I lost my dad, so I wasn't there. But we had amazing people that stepped in place and were able to make that whole thing work. But how, how that works is that five or six people come from Iowa Economic Development Authority. They spend three days here. They interview with sixteen different groups of people to get information and data on what they think about the downtown, those people who have businesses in the downtown, you know, just what are the opportunities, what are the challenges? And then on the third day of each one of those assessments, they actually gave a public presentation with preliminary findings and you know, kind of showing the general direction of what they were thinking. And what was pretty amazing about both of them, and again, like I wasn't here from a coconut, but one of the things that Josh said was that the things that they were addressing were pretty small details. And that was the same in Bellevue as well. And what that does is that speaks to the fact that a lot of people are doing a lot of good things. You know, it's like if you have blatant things that are just, you know, people like, hey, you really need to do something about it. But you know, it's kind of like when the auditor finds tiny little things to write a comment on, you go, you know, that's pretty amazing when they don't find this blatant, well, you know, that was miss whatever. So, you know, good news with that. The other thing that we were able to get this year is we got funding first to make the Highway sixty-one industrial park a certified site. That involved a lot of different studies. We contracted with five different engineering firms that came in and they did the wetlands and they did the hazard and they did historical and they had to survey the property. It was pretty, pretty extensive. I learned a lot along the way, but we were able to get everything submitted. It's currently being reviewed. And evidently, we're gonna get another list, because they said that's just how it works, of some fine tuning to do, and then we should receive that designation probably within the next sixty days. What that does for it, for us, is that we now become part of the state of Iowa database. So when anybody's looking for a site all across the country, they can come in and they can say, hey, I'm looking for a site that has this many acres that is completely, you know, our transportation, we're half a mile from sixty-one. You know, I mean, it, it's, it's perfect the way that that whole layout is. You know, Donna and I have had several discussions over the years, and it's just amazing that that thing hasn't just taken off. You know, why don't they see it? It's just, it's right there. It's so, but anyway, this, this elevates us, it puts us at the next level. And so when we have those site selectors, selectors doing national searches, we're right there and they see that we're development ready. We've got everything ready to go. All they literally have to do is come in and start moving dirt. So that, so I think that that's a great advantage for us. One of the other things is we got the Bellevue Catalyst Grant for the Lock Twelve Building, if you're familiar with that in Bellevue. That's been a great project and will be a great project going forward. And then the reason why I'm here that's in front of you for the agenda item is we are working with the Iowa Initiative for Sustainable Communities. If you recall, gosh, when I first started here, I think there were twenty-three different projects going on across the county, working with the different cities and the county on different initiatives, whether or not it was, they were picking some logos, it was doing some plans for developments. Anyway, this particular one is one of the things that I'm particularly not concerned with, but I want to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the businesses in the county, that we're going in the right direction. Our board has a constant conversation about are we heading in the right direction? What does this look like? How can we be more efficient? What additional resources do we need? How can we work better together with the chambers, with tourism? You know, what does this all look like? And so they've actually agreed to take it on as a capstone project. So this is, these are master students who will come in. It's a year-long project and they will come in and they'll talk to businesses, they'll talk to you, they'll talk to all the city governments. They'll talk to the chambers, again, tourism, you know, it's like, what are we doing right? How can we be doing things different? How can we be doing things more efficiently? What are the gaps? You know, are we focusing in the right direction? Are there other areas that we don't even see that maybe companies are more vulnerable and we could be doing things to assist them? You know, I think that with everything that we've done with like the, you know, the downtown, we know that a healthy downtown is predictive of a good environment in the county overall. You know, we've got to protect our downtowns, thriving downtowns. I mean, the city's thriving. So we've, we're doing a lot in that direction. We're addressing workforce development. We're talking to companies about succession planning, you know, just yesterday that they announced another manufacturing four point O grant, which focuses on technology. You know, what technology can businesses be bringing in to be able to do what they're doing more efficiently? If they can do it more efficiently, they need less people. Less people is good for us because we're losing seventy-two percent of our workforce, you know, it's retiring out within the next ten years. So, you know, as we address these challenges, I think that these are, there are a lot of good opportunities to make sure that we're heading in the right direction, we're doing the right things that, you know, that people know that we care, you know, that we're here and we want to make sure that we're we're doing the right things for the right reasons and going in the right direction.
Good. And if I remember right from the meeting, the capstone project, she says this is a master's project. There's what, three students that are gonna be doing it? This is their master's project. They are gonna be graded on the work they do. So this isn't just a project they're doing kind of half-heartedly. This is how they decide. When the school decides whether they get their masters or not. So this is something they're gonna be pouring their heart and soul into. I forget the financial ask, because it says, it says what you're asking, we could be a financial sponsor.
Fiscal sponsor.
Just, you're just a fiscal agent, so we're not asking a dime from you.
There you go.
You know?
So you're reading the Jackson County Community Foundation is a funding provider, correct?
Right. Yeah. So they just wrote you the check and then the last time when we got one for the, you were generous to to cover, not cover, to be our fiscal responsible for our childcare development grant. And I think they wrote you the check and I think you literally signed it over, maybe?
We did not deposit it. We endorse it.
Yeah, endorse it to us and then it's that simple. But in order to submit it, I have to have that you agree with the project and that you just agree to.
Questions?
You don't see any issues?
No.
Yeah, so.
No, I think it's important to move forward.
So there's two approvals today that we need.
For the grant, this is application for the grant, basically.
We gotta approve the resolution.
So you need to approve the chair signing the community foundation, a greater review of NAN five oh one C three fiscal sponsorship agreement for regional economic development strategies and efficiencies.
I'm moved.
I'll second that.
And a motion by Mike, second by Nan to do what she said. Resolution number eleven forty-five.
This is the.
This is just you agreeing to the fiscal sponsorship.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Alright.
Motion carries.
With your approval on signing the fiscal sponsorship, now I need a motion to approve unauthorized signatures on resolution eleven forty-five dash zero nine dash twenty-three dash twenty-two five approving the Jackson County Economic Alliance, the J C E A application to the community foundation of Jackson County and agreeing to be the fiscal sponsor in partnership with the Iowa Initiative for Sustainable Communities.
I'll make that motion. Second?
And a motion by Nan, second by Mike, to approve resolution eleven forty-five dash oh nine dash twenty-three dash twenty-two five with the Jackson County Economic Alliance and the Community Foundation for the Sustainability Communities Grant. Any other discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Would you care?
Perfect.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Andrew Long, jail administrator.
Morning.
And company, come on down.
Good morning.
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 So we're just kind of following up on the, the M A T or M O U D stuff we talked about previously. We received a bill from Oster House for one of our inmates that is on M O U D medication. That medication is a hundred fifty dollars and eighty-two cents. I think Mike had brought up checking into if the state would help cover that with the A S O. Laney reached out to him. She does not have an answer on that yet. So if these medications will not be covered by the A S O, I just wanted to work on a procedure on how to get these paid. I believe that, looking at that exhibit E, Schedule A, Section F, the E A F, I thought about treatment for incarcerated populations to include provide evidence-based treatment and recovery support, including M A T for persons with opioid use disorder and co-occurring substance use disorder, criminal health disorders within and transitioning out of the criminal justice system and increased funding for jails provide treatment to inmates with O U D or opioid use disorder. So I guess if the A S O won't cover it, I just want to look into what the procedure would be to have that medications paid out of the opioid settlements. I don't know if that's something where you guys want us to come each time we get a bill and say, this is what it is. Or if there's a different way to submit that, I'm not sure.
The one question I have is, how do they identify or tagged as an opioid abuser where this qualifies? You know, because that to me would be an auditory thing. If we're using opioid money to pay for stuff, which I have absolutely no problem with whatsoever, how did you identify him as being an O U D?
So this is prescribed by a physician. So the physician is saying, yes, you have, that's correctly.
That's correct.
Mistake.
Yeah, I just, just want to make sure we passed auditory muster, because to me, I don't have a problem with it if the A S Os are not paying for it, which we hope they do, but if they don't, if this is approved and under Schedule A, which seventy-five percent of our money has to, opioid settlement money has to be used on, I have no problem doing it as long as we establish, you know, a protocol and that would be to be correlating with, with Lisa to make sure we're just doing it correctly. Coming up with this procedure.
They are identified by a physician and the medications that are prescribed are pretty specific to this use, so.
And I believe there's what, three medications?
Maybe four.
Maybe four, yeah.
Okay.
So are we tracking that or how are we documenting that, guys? So that a year or two from now, we don't remember who that was and what, what's our fallback on?
Well, so this is our first one we've had. So I think that'd just be as simple as a spreadsheet tracking, otherwise.
I'm happy to do, I'm keeping track of the meds anyway.
So have you reached out as far as other facilities or organizations that are doing this, law enforcement, I should say, or jails or whatever you want, correction centers that are doing this and how they, what their procedure is as far as implementing opioid funds?
So we have a meeting coming up here on Thursday with a company that does a lot of that advisory stuff, kind of walks you through the processes as far as implementing everything. That's looking more towards as we start getting prisoners introduced to this. In this case, this gal was already prescribed on these medications. I don't know how much guidance they have in terms of the opioid funding itself. I know Dubuque County also has a meeting with the same company tomorrow, I'm sorry, Thursday, so, you know, I can talk to Dubuque County too and see how they're moving on this stuff.
I mean, I can see where we could proceed with it, but I just want to make sure we keep in contact with Laney, because if the A S Os are going to pay for that kind of medication, because I thought at one point they were also talking about the mental, if people with opioid disorder, they might also pay for some mental health prescriptions and things like that. So we just want to make sure that we take it from appropriate funds if they're out there and stuff.
Oh, absolutely.
So, but if you want to get together and work out a procedure where you think it passes muster and we're good, I have no problem with it and it makes sense to me.
And then we fill out the same request form, yeah.
That's, that's my next request is then this request form gets filled out and signatures are.
Can we just do that, what, quarterly or, or do you want it per? And again, that's where I think.
My question is, is are you approving this as a blanket for anybody or are you doing this on a case by case basis?
You almost need to do a case by case basis, because you're gonna want to track exactly who that was so that if it needs to for audit purposes and that, if it needs to be tracked.
I don't think it needs to come to us for a case by case. It just a request, you're saying the request for this one person?
Is that correct? It's whatever the board wishes.
Sure, I think there's a paper trail that way and whatever happens to this individual or individuals going forward, at least we have a record and that.
And area also. So I use that for my reporting purposes.
Yeah.
Right.
It would be just like if you were wanting puncture-proof gloves or Yeah. a drop box for opioids.
I think you two can get together and come up with a suitable procedure. And if you want us to approve it after that, we'd be more than willing to. Because again, you know, that, that, I don't think there's an opposition up here at all.
If you're looking for a blessing to use the funds, yeah.
Exactly.
Okay.
There's no reason. There's no reason Jackson County taxpayers need to pay for this if there's money out there from other resources we can tap into. So that's the big thing. So figure out the procedures you guys want to do. If we need to bless it, bring it back and we will certainly do that. So.
Because I think that request we have to sign. And your, your questions, I'm sorry. Each request, so for, for patient A, that's gonna have to come back and have a sign. For patient B, it's still gonna have to be presented and have a sign.
We just need to be. If you're requesting per person, we have to be HIPAA compliant.
Right.
We don't want that names and everything, because of freedom of information. I, I would like the policies to make sure HIPAA compliance is adhered to, because you don't need to be sitting up here talking about patient A is getting these drugs and it is free to be printed in the paper and stuff, because that, I don't think there's a necessary need to know HIPAA guidelines. That needs to be spread out. So that's the procedure. How do we maintain HIPAA compliance and still do this?
I don't need to know who it is. I just need to have this form to justify when I fill out the report.
Yeah.
That's just why we're using it. And with the signatures, it's now on me, it's on.
Well, again, but I don't want that name to get to us, because if we're gonna request on a per, per prisoner basis, you gotta have that name. How do you know this drug went to, you know, there has to be a correlation, a connection, a chain of custody, so to speak, where this drug paid for, for this person out of opioid funds, that's what they're gonna look for.
So if you're looking for something that you will receive that we can track who it was without giving it to you guys who it was, that's as simple as, so our record system assigns each R S D an identification number.
Perfect. I don't want to answer compliance, you know, we sit through those classes all the time.
Yeah.
So I don't, I don't wanna, I don't want to be in violation of anything.
So for Lisa's purposes, her documentation, tracking documentation, you know, it could be patient Alpha one, two, three, that goes to Lisa. As far as the auditor is concerned, they just need to know which patient, you know, the numbers and stuff. And then if we ever needed to drill back down into it, you can identify patient Alpha one, two, three in your jail records, but it doesn't need to be public information.
Right.
To correct places at work.
Then it's correct. My only other question, looks like you have a receipt in your hand.
Correct.
Have you paid that already?
We have not. So that's why I hold on to this, just to see how to address it.
Why don't, why don't you guys figure out a procedure and how you want to do this and bring it to us next week and we can approve a receipt after that.
Sounds good.
Alright.
I would, I would just notify whoever your receipt is for that, you know, we're working on the process of getting insurance, they'll work with us.
Yeah. And, and Oster House is very easy to work with, so we can certainly address that.
By Andrew, meaning saying he's got a meeting Thursday, he's got somebody, I forget the title, is actually coming in to tour our jail and talk to our F T Os about this program. And to answer your question, Mike, it was on, Andrew doesn't know it, but I was talking to Sheriff Nate Neff out of Blackhawk County. And they actually, they have a program where they get one point four F T E full-time equivalent hours where they pay for someone to, when they come into the jail, to go through that process of identifying whether they're on opioids or have an opioid issue. Now they use like Pathway, which is like a third party. So they just reimburse Pathway's hours for time spent in jail. We'll never be able to have a full-time person. But we do spend time on it, so maybe we could explore doing something similar.
Reimbursement?
Yeah, maybe not with Pathway, but Unity Point or whoever.
I mean, we did the same thing with mental health when we were.
Yeah.
So in your group, whatever their brand is, there's, I obviously believe that there's talk again legislation coming up as far as medication stuff like that again, like last year, I would assume, right? Is there talk of that yet for the new session?
Continued talk about, you know, things like this. I guess unrelated, but related, I heard the director of the H S.
Kelly Garcia.
Yeah, so anyway, there'll be some changes maybe coming down the pipe, but, but yeah, this M O U D thing, everybody's kind of in the same boat, trying to figure out what's the right way to utilize the funds and be, you know, protected that we don't have a problem later for the auditor and stuff, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Like I said, put them together and we'll get it done for you.
Sounds good.
Yep, sounds good. Well, thank you much.
Thank you, Fluch.
What you do? Thank you.
Next up, we have Nathan Jones, Conservation Director, Department of.
Morning, Nate. Morning, guys. How are you doing? Good. Um, gonna give you a quick update, a last board meeting. It started off. You saw a few weeks ago, I sent you what we sent out, proposals for Bridgeport access. We had four bids and I should have brought my spreadsheet. I've got it out, make sure. Four bids for access. Putting in the access at Bridgeport. Bids came in as good or better than I expected. They came in under engineers estimates, which is good always.
Right.
So with those bids, inline excavating is who we accepted to do it. So we'll, we'll have to figure out how. It's a little higher than what the grant's gonna pay, so we'll probably at the end of the year, we'll see where our budget is if we have to do amendment. Our board proved that we pay for the rest out of our reserve fund to cover that extra cost. So we'll see where we're at. And then I'm working with them, because I did throw in some things that were changes from Alex's former engineer that hoped to bring the cost down and then did bring the cost down about fifteen thousand dollars from the original bid. So those are things I'm working with the contractor that got the bid to see if we can make sure those are done right and feasible. So that'll be a project to hopefully start taking place this fall. We haven't gotten a signed contract with them yet.
I would say there ain't much fall left.
I know.
It's going fast.
But they seem like they could do it. So talking to them. So that, that was the first thing that was kind of a, that's been lingering for two or three years now. So we'll get that access going and get a ramp in there at least. And then further improvements, we'll have to get more grants on. The second portion, and it's probably the big portion of the meeting, and I don't know, Nan has thought about it too, but we had Iowa Rock Climbers Coalition, some of their members showed up to the meeting. And our insurance is always allowed it at Ozark. We have a signage that meets our insurance minimum out on the west and Ozark area. This spring, and this probably stems more from me, our staff had caught them, they call it bouldering. It's not where they hook into the rocks. It's they climb so high.
Difference on that.
Yeah, I call it rock climbing, but we caught them on whatever areas doing it a few times. Our ordinance doesn't say anything that we could kick them out of those areas for doing it. But I questioned it. I didn't really like it, because it was some of our highly protected areas with some maybe species that of special concern and endangered species. The individuals we talked to were really nice. They understood and said, alright, we won't do it there. But they requested to come to a board meeting, so that's where they came to this board meeting. They were looking for other areas. And I said, I want to talk to you guys, our insurance, I haven't had a chance yet, but I think Prairie Creek. If we're gonna have emergency crews, Prairie Creek makes more sense than Ozark even to me. At least we have roads and trails for any of those sort of people get to. So the question mark is, first, is our insurance gonna go up if we allow another area?
Do we?
Or move it or? Well, I've got email strings back and forth with them from the past.
How was the?
So they must not. I don't know. They must not have given us a bumper call. I don't know. So they just had a sign or a thing that we had to have signage that said this outside, certain, with certain amount of words. So I guess it's a, I said, I also wanted to talk to you guys and hear your concerns. I, I have a little bit of concerns and then they'd heard them. We also had a couple of board members with concerns, but they wanted me to proceed just to look into it.
Obviously, our biggest concern of mine anyways, the liability issue as far as incidents happening, you know, I mean, that's, that's the, I mean, if they have no fall protection, I, I mean, is that required or, well, I would think insurance is gonna say, hey dude, you gotta have some fall protection. Now, this group, the way they talked, but again, this is this group. It's not just a individual Tom Hughes going out there and climbing on the rocks, you know, this group as an organization that kind of sounds like they do like a fall mat or something where they're climbing and all that. Now, again, like I said, it was that group does just a general.
I guess.
Kids going out there and bouldering.
Yeah.
Basically, the difference for the public who didn't know what that described to me, bouldering, they're just looking for handholds. It's kind of like the makeshift rock walls that you see in buildings.
So they're basically climbing free.
Yes.
Like free solo, where there's no ropes, there's no.
Right. And the other rock climbing, they're putting in pick holds and have ropes and.
I guess one question I would have, there's been several times people fell out at the caves. What do the caves have for safeguards and protections or?
Well, they, they're not supposed to climb at all at the caves by their rules. And that, that's part of my problem is we don't have an ordinance in place that really even protects us from telling them, no, when I read our ordinance, it's kind of vague on it. It's for the guys with ropes and putting hooks in. They're only allowed at one spot in the whole county, but these guys that are free climbing, they're like.
I, I, I recommend you, you kind of talk to like the caves to see what their verbiage is. Talk to a couple of the people you get with the county attorneys and revamp what you think it needs to be, because again, I'm no rock climbing expert, but between the county attorney, what you find and the insurance company, I'm sure there's some verbiage out there that could at least offer some protection against us, because, yeah, but there also has to be legality. There has to be like an implied risk.
Yeah.
You know?
Obviously, a lot of these events, you have a release form. Basically, you have to sign this, you know, and they've held up. I know they have, but.
Yeah, so that's something I can reach out to. Stay allowed on several areas. They have, they know rocks.
I mean, we, we're, that's gonna basically cover us that if you're doing it and we don't know, you know, we want to be covered that way.
Yeah, that's what I worry about.
A group coming in, they make contact conservation and be like, okay, we want to go to so-called maybe Prairie Creek this weekend or Friday and do this. Okay, you gotta sign this re-release form. Well, I'm out there on Friday and see that and I'm like, oh, I want to try that. I don't know that I gotta sign a release form and I go out there the following week and. I don't know that I gotta sign a release form and I go out there the following week and decide to try rock climbing.
Yeah.
We want something to cover ourselves that way.
I know.
We need more signs with this, what certain words you said?
Yeah.
What?
You, we want, we need more of those signages with the certain words you said on it.
Yeah, that's what I probably, but then we almost, every one of our areas in the county has rocks, so we probably almost have to have one on every area, so. Or figure out what we, how they want it.
Most every road has speed limit sign on it.
I know, that's exactly where they want it, or hopefully they don't want it at every rock below, cause then that might be.
Yeah, I would think if you had your entrances.
Yeah, at the entrances, you know, climate risk.
I, I certainly, like Don said, I was certainly talking to the county attorney and see what kind of ordinance we do need to pass, and we need to get that, um. Moving it forward if it's in something that you think is really, well, it is, uh, you know.
Well, it's alive, and I didn't know these guys were doing it, and we wouldn't know, but we were now doing a. Marketing project for a timber thing for Kevin, I wanted to, and all of a sudden we wondered upon all these guys. Like, what the heck?
Well, we don't have no trespassing signage or anything.
They're public here. It's mush, it was mushroom hunting season, I saw cars, I'm thinking, guys are probably mushroom hunting.
Yeah.
And scaling up the side of a block.
Yeah.
But, you know, and then you have the issue of if you do. Have, allow it somewhat, whatever. You know, so like you said, if we have it at the Ozarks, unless that's gonna end up changing, but. You know, conservation is concerned, they want to kind of pick the areas that it's allowed so that we're not endangering. Species out there that are rare in Iowa, no less rare in Jackson County, you know.
Still gotta have something in place to say you can't do it.
Yeah, which we, we probably could go off our sign ordinance, just a sign saying at the entrance. I'd have to talk to the county attorney, make sure that holds up, but he has told me, we have a rule that says if it's signed with any wording. That word misses, so that works. So that's, that was a, one of the main bulk of the meeting was talking to them. Super friendly group, I've had concerns, had bad run-ins with rock climbers when I worked for the state, so. Um, I'm probably the negative one versus some of them. Um, and then the last part, just for you guys' update, they, they have started putting. The pilings in for the fridge out at Prairie Creek, trail work's kind of going on. Um, that change ordinance went through, so we've added an extra rock to the trail to build it up with extra a little bit there. Um, so things are moving along, um, talking to Dan Schrader, he seems pretty confident timelines. Gonna be feasible and achievable in the near future, so, um, look forward to having a trail done pretty soon. Um, we started doing some seeding on the disco course ourselves, even though it's been drier than dry, last night's rain hopefully. Maybe kickstart some of that, so, um, you'll see an email, and I think Jess might already send it to you. Then October, we're gonna kind of have a little kickoff for the project. We'll probably still have a ribbon cutting next spring for the governor's stuff, but, um, we kind of wanted to at least highlight the project this spring. Talk about the water quality portion, get the engineer and the disc golfers out, so you guys are all welcome, and you'll see that coming at some point.
Yeah. We should.
Alright.
Seems like that course has been being used a lot, or they're finding a lot of lost discs.
Yeah, yeah, it seems like every other day there's a new couple discs coming up at the office, somebody found them, so. Yeah. Alright.
Thanks, David.
Alright, Tom Hughes, assistant to the engineer, well.
Morning, Tom.
Uh, it's like we had an application for an entrance permit on thirty seventh street, Caleb Miller. And we've done site distance study for, and checked for culvert requirements, it's like an eighteen inch. Um, but are recommended for approval. I got motion to approve.
I would second.
Got a motion, but then second by Mike to approve an entrance permit residential for Caleb Miller, Southport Township, section twenty-three. On thirty-seventh street, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
And then we had a request from Irish Meadow Alpaca Farm to, uh. Place on temporary signs, slow signs for, uh, they're having an open house this weekend. And they're expecting traffic on the shoulders and, um. I guess we think we can put the signs up temporarily and take them back down and just. Asking for approval. The Sheriff's Department has been contacted.
Put them out on Friday, pick them up on Monday, correct?
We've done this.
Yeah.
Yeah, and kind of approved for liability reasons, knew as far as in the right of way and worked in the right of way or whatnot.
Yeah.
I assume. Yeah, I don't have issue with it, I would make a motion to approve.
Second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nick to approve an application from Irish Meadows Alpaca Farm for temporary slow signage request. For this weekend, new updates, uh, twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth of September. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries.
An update on what the crews are doing.
Sure.
Hello, we have reclaim going on in Springbrook, Sterling, W is about half, and two hundred sixteenth avenue is done.
And I'm gonna commend you on that one, I like it.
You like that one?
I drove that yesterday, it's quite impressive how that's kind of come back together and.
Good.
Uh.
Yeah, they didn't mess up, they didn't mess around with it, it was dry then though.
Yeah, yeah. Maybe the moisture will help them more.
Yeah. Yeah, back a little bit, a little grain at once or twice, yeah, it's, it's, it makes quite a difference.
And then they started in Sterling area, five hundred and fifteenth avenue is done, and working on sixty-fourth street. Uh, W, did that one. Uh, Springbrook, three hundred forty-first avenue to the east of Springbrook, going north, working on that too.
Good. How long are they gonna keep going with the reclaiming?
Uh, I talked to Rick this morning, but he's shooting for October third to be done, but it could go as late as the tenth.
Okay.
So.
Well, it sounds like the weather's gonna be good next week, yeah, it's fifty and eighty.
There's an area to cover yet, so hopefully it'll be.
Yeah. It's a good progress this summer, yeah.
Get as much done as you can.
And we got a crew working on two hundred eighty-seven, switch, silver and switch, road, doing brush cutting up there. Next to the culvert, or the bridges getting repainted.
Are they using both the new machines?
Yeah.
Working good?
Yeah, it seems like it, so.
Again, cleanest rideaways and.
Brush cutting, brush mulching.
Yeah, yeah, so, I think it's going pretty good.
Awesome.
Yeah.
And like you said, I was in, I was in Iowa over the weekend, and I think their rideaways from the center line. Of their secondary roads is about twenty feet, and, uh, there are, all the roads are paved, but there ain't nothing beyond the pavement hardly. You can drive down the road and pick a here of corn, so, uh, um. When people say our roads are bad, I'm like, I don't think, I, I would much rather be able to see you run corners and stuff like that than. You had to kind of eke out into the oncoming, the opposing traffic to see if anybody was coming, it was kind of dicey, so. I, I think you guys are doing a good job, and we got a great road system throughout our counties.
Thanks, and we're still patching on E seventeen. Uh, between Andrew and sixty-one.
Mm-hmm.
So the rain slowed them down this morning, hopefully we'll get a patch, but we need to get that, so using a temporary signage. And then construction on Prairie Creek, like Nick said, so that's going, seems to be going, they're moving the bridge. The ninety-foot structure should be here on Friday.
Okay.
And then traders on top are getting a permit to put the longer one in. They'll have to do road closure, he's applying for that here in the state.
His baby.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks, Tom.
Yeah. Have a good day.
Commend you guys.
Alrighty, next up we got Beck and Fuma, Fuma from, uh, zoning, come on up.
Morning, Barry.
Morning. We're at zoning department, um, there was some permit activity in July, we had fifteen zoning permits applied for, and in August there were twelve. For my October department update, I'll provide a third quarter comparison with last year's numbers, I believe Lori did that last year with. July, August and September, um, and I'm expecting the permit volumes to taper off as we move into fall, but. With the September weather, it's hard to say, yeah.
Yeah, and interest rates are going down a little bit too, so you see a lot of activity around here that you really don't notice, but if you drive down some of these roads, there's stuff going on.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'm kind of interested to see if it'll pick up just a little bit. July and August seem to be down, just as I quickly answered last year's numbers, there, um, September will pick up. Um, for the Board of Adjustment and Zoning Commission, the Board of Adjustment met last night, um, they granted an extension on a permit that had been issued. Last year, um, it had a year expiration, and, and then they are completing. Much of the work themselves, things of the wet July kind of impeded their progress. Um, and they're quite a bit done and are actually even hoping to be done in five weeks, but. We granted them an extension until June first, just barring any other weather delays. Um, the zoning commission continues its ordinance rewrite work with the ECIA, a public hearing will be held October twentieth at seven P M. Regarding the proposed zoning ordinance, um, we had a discussion last night about meeting times, um. Last year, um, we had to put down that October meetings, we're gonna start at six. And then we decided last night that, um, it usually happens after daylight savings time. So we're gonna keep the October meeting times for seven o'clock and then six o'clock start time in November.
Okay.
And, um, also for training and professional development over the past month, I've attended a couple of Zoom lead plane training sessions. And really interesting.
Yeah. That front plane map is interesting, if you got time to look at it.
Yeah, it is.
So, um, I also, I also seen a, um, request for a variance over in Leisure Lake, I believe, for a new structure. Was that on Mondays?
Really?
I think it come from, it come from you just in the last couple of days.
Was that the one from last night?
Yeah, maybe.
Extension?
Oh, that was. That was a new structure though, one of two lots.
Yeah.
But they said that the, uh, that the sewer was already there though, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, nice.
Yeah.
There again is an improvement, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, then the structure that they proposed on, they really looked nice.
It does.
It does look nice.
Yeah, I think.
I don't know if that's just to say, this is what we're building.
Yeah.
And.
So not, but different colors.
Right, yes, that one did look really kind of striking, the black on black, they're gonna do red on black, which I think will also look really nice. Um, I did talk to somebody else from Leisure Lake yesterday, a new property owner. And, um, they said that the, um, board. At, they were really happy with what the board is progressing with.
Nice, yeah, good.
Yeah.
You know, they, they've, we've always proposed to them that they need to take control and, and help themselves, you know, so.
Yeah.
Hopefully that's coming about.
And with the new owner, he said that he, he was seeing that progress.
Nice.
Good.
Yeah.
Glad to see you. Any other questions, Rebecca?
No, I think the young gentleman out there was, was a Bears fan, he was cheering, so he was.
Pardon that to you there.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thanks, Becky.
Alright, Ms. Lisa, we'll turn it over to you.
I need a motion to approve events of the September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five board proceedings as written by Dr. Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
Second.
Got a motion by Nick, second by Mike to approve the minutes of the September sixteen, twenty twenty-five board proceedings as written by Dr. Smith and authorized publication in official newspapers. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Alright, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing. In the amount of three hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and eleven cents.
Come on.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nick to authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants and publication of the claims listing in the amount of three hundred, three thousand, seven hundred. Thirty-two dollars and eleven cents, any other discussion? And just to note, a little over half of this is rock, so, uh, most of it's just, there's a few, uh.
Roads I talked about, they were misreplay.
Exactly. But, uh, there was a few, uh, um, standard yearly fees and stuff we paid, but, uh, most of it was rock, so, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve resolution eleven forty-four dash zero nine dash twenty-three dash twenty twenty-five. To disperse seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-four cents. In federal flood control revenues collected from leased land property along the Mississippi River.
And just a brief explanation?
So, um, these landowners that have these cabins along the river. There is a rent that is paid to the armored corps of engineers, and they take that money and they disperse it back to the taxing entities. Last year, we received, uh, seventy-four thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-eight cents. Um, this year, as I said, seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-four cents, of that. Secondary roads receives eighteen thousand, two hundred and three dollars and forty-five cents, so it is apportioned out amongst the taxing entities in that area.
So is that calculated on water levels, or does that calculate it just on?
I know there's a formula, but I don't know the exact.
Yeah, I know we do it every year.
Yeah, we do, as we get the money, sometimes they're behind and, you know, so that's why. When we get it, we do the resolution and we disperse the money.
Make a motion to approve.
I would second.
Got a motion by Nick, second by Mike to approve resolution number eleven forty-four dash oh nine dash twenty-three dash twenty twenty-five. To disperse seventy-two thousand, eight hundred thirteen dollars and eighty-four cents in federal. Blood control revenues collected from leased land property along the Mississippi, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
That's all I have for the board today.
Alright. Luwin, you have the floor? I emailed Elizabeth, but, or I text her, I didn't hear anything back then.
Elizabeth is not coming today, she had something, she had a conflict, so she's coming next week.
Okay. Scratch her off the agenda.
Scratch her off the agenda, she called me yesterday afternoon, so. Um, all I have for you today is the calendar. Tomorrow, um, September twenty-fourth, at nine A M is an iris meeting in Dubuque or by Zoom for Nick. At five thirty is historic preservation commission meeting at Clinton Engines, for any of you that want to go to that. And at six thirty is a municipal league meeting, um, in Sanctinatus for Mike. Thursday, September twenty-fifth, there's an R P A meeting, um, for Don and Nick. In Dubuque or by Zoom, and it is an hour later than usual, it's at ten A M instead of nine. At five thirty Thursday night is a hate cat meeting by Zoom for Mike. And our next regular reading will be at nine A M on Tuesday, September thirtieth.
The waste authority on Monday, that was changed from yesterday.
Right.
Didn't have a form.
It's a thirty on Monday to twenty-nine, correct?
Thank you very much. I saw the, Bethany, you know. Andy was here, but she left, I mean.
She came to listen, she told me.
Okay.
Okay, anything else before the board?
Jackson Economic Alliance, we just kind of met, we hadn't met since May, so it was kind of just catching up the financials and making sure everything was in order. Uh, we talked a little bit about the grant that Kelly proposed today, so it was pretty much a little bit of stuff, um. The Macocano River Man, Water Management Authority continues, you know, they're finishing up their sampling, things like that, but. Everything's rolling well, we're, they're getting some initial numbers on some of the stuff, but the main bulk of the, the data we collect from the water samplings. Doesn't come out until March during our, um, semi-annual event, we get together, that's when we get the big presentation to talk about the different levels and all. And they, last year I learned that they can titrate stuff down to the trillionth. Of a milligram or whatever, and I'm like. That's crazy to think about, they can get that specific in it, so.
We can do it by the tongue.
And limestone boss, I was not able to attend, I was out of state, so, and that was an impersonal one, so. He's gonna have any board or commission they, they attended or?
Um, early childhood, we met Monday, basically, of course, the big thing was. Director Garcia resignation and Larry Johnson is. Going to be the one taking over, and he used to be in charge of licensing. Some sort, um, yeah, they're really struggling with the changes that were made at the state. On three-year-old preschool scholarships, um. Preschools aren't wanting to necessarily. Jump through all the hoops that is now being required by what the state is doing. It's way more effort than what they feel they'll get from a benefit from it. So basically, last year we funded almost forty preschool scholarships, right now they have twelve. It's really kind of a concern that, you know, are some kids not getting to go to three-year-old preschool because. Of the funding issues, so it's kind of a big concern to them, they're really pushing, uh, programs that. And funding for car seats from infant through. The toddler stage and looking at different ways of getting information out there to, to everybody on that. Um, they got. Also some fundings going out if people are in need of, need of basically baby essentials, diapers, wipes. Infant formula, you can check into either the Women's Health Service or the Early Childhood. Iowa Coalition and, um, you got a lot of form for eligibility if you're struggling in that area, so. But they got a lot of good programs going on, then we. Going on kind of this fall and in the spring, coming out, age learning, reading and things like that, that they're supporting, so. Trying to find different ways of spending some of the funding that. Is still gonna help the young children of Jackson and Pine County.
Would you have anything?
Uh, no, I just wanna, uh, commend and send kudos to our maintenance department for the work that they're doing down at T W B as far as testing the doors and. Following up with, uh, with the issue down there, there, it seems like a pretty extensive test of what they're doing there, trying to. Get a resolution to that water issue.
In sending through some of the meetings with the Together We Build Board and stuff, they often comment that, um, at least the Together We Build people. Are commenting that it seems like Jeff seems to be the subject matter expert. On whoever comes from, whether they're via the construction or the manufacturers, it seems like Jeff seems to be the center hub that is. Uh, able to find resolutions, and so they really appreciate him being there, because it really helps kinda. Get things to resolution quicker is his knowledge, so he's much, very much appreciated in what they do down there, so.
We should think about charging for his services.
I mean, doing that door test could have been a, it was a half a day project, could have been an all-day project if you had to do.
Well, if you have to pay somebody to do it.
If you had to do the five minutes, the three minutes, the three minutes, the three minutes.
I mean, if you're gonna go after somebody for cause, and you don't have an answer, and you're gonna pay somebody to give you that answer, it would be pretty dramatic.
Yes.
Alright. Anything else for the good of the meeting?
Well, for the business, I make a motion with adjourn.
I'll second that.
Good, motion by Mike second by Nen to adjourn, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, everybody have a good day.